America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the minutes on the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Second, it's in further discussion. Hearing none, all is fair. So I, I post in time, motion. Regular maintenance, blade roads. We hauled the moderator up to Burnsville last week to get repaired since we're down a mechanic and it was. Now that we've got a trailer, we can spend less money having somebody tow it up. Took one up there and I think we got one over. There's another one we need repairs on to the old mobiles, so they're get fixed. Get some roads bladed while the harvest is still going on. And then I know our bridge on Field Deer is the stoplights are up for that one now, so they're gonna start getting working on that one. This week, today, so.
That was just some.
There's some piling repairs and some back wall concrete repairs and then the joint in that middle of the deck. That separated out, they're gonna get that rerouted. I don't know if the other joints are gonna get rerouted too, just by the main ones getting repaired too, so. And they wanted to not, they wanted me to close the road down, I said, no, we need to keep it open for artists, so. But that was already in the plan anyway for what they needed to do, so. That's regular maintenance, I'm gonna be. I told you that for the meeting, they've got a bridge project starting in Mitchell County, so I'm gonna be. Probably over there more than over here for the next week or two while they're doing that. And then we've got this contract from WHKS, these professional services agreements to review. It's four bridges or little bridges on Kansas twenty-sixth and four fifteenth street between, is it Quincy? Just west east of Kansas between Quincy and Quail, between Raven and Quail, a little little bridge there that probably put a box covered in. We'll use local funds for that and so we're gonna do local lettings and we're gonna tie these two together, the one on Mallard, it's another little box. Ahead of a, ahead of a drainage way, so. We're gonna, it was the, the contracts for. Lump sum fee of forty-one thousand dollars for both design of bridges and get them through letting, we're gonna do a local letting. To this local money and we can accelerate the schedule. The schedule was to, to present. I've had these now for a couple of weeks to submit review plans to the county by December sixteenth, that might be a little bit behind schedule. The goal is to get these let this winter, this spring yet, so we can construct next in this fiscal year yet, so. That's where we're headed, so I recommend we. Give this WHKS for forty-one thousand, not to lump sum fee, including expensive forty-one thousand dollars to design these two box covered structures.
And do the video.
And yeah, it'll be through the bid process.
I'll take a motion to approve official service agreement between Worth County WHKS.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, isn't it, for the discussion?
I'll change the data. All got free this morning.
Did they get those pipes in out there and?
We did get four hundred eightieth done and then we are going to be doing thrush. This week, we've got a pipe there by. Myers, there's a little culvert by Myers that we're gonna take out, so it's going in. Gonna be coming up this week.
Okay.
Hopefully it's just a two or three day closure on thrush.
Sounds good. Alright, okay.
Anything else? I'll sit here for.
You got a question?
Yeah, who's not gonna take off here, honestly? Did you get that email from NACO on the? Local assistance tribal consistency fund money that we got coming? Came out September, Congress passed it on September twenty-ninth and we're eligible for fifty thousand FY twenty-two and after fifty thousand FY twenty-three.
Tribal money?
Well, it's local assistance because we must get some money from the federal government for something. Because when I looked on the states. We can get it, Third Order can get it, Winnebago and Hancock could, but Floyd Mitchell can't, so I don't know what the reasoning is. All I noticed on there were eligible uses were transportation infrastructure.
I'll look at that if it was tribal money, then it might have more to do with.
Well, it was a combination of both local assistance and tribal.
Alright.
I can't see where we'd get any tribal money.
Oh, and just the email came in when?
Probably last week.
Yeah, it came in. Hang tight. October thirteenth. Oh, it only got sent to me. I don't know why that happened. Well, yeah.
Use it for something.
And we have till January thirty-first of twenty-three applied. So I don't know how we're getting FY twenty-two for fifty thousand when we're going to apply it.
It's always in the back, it's weird sometimes, so.
No, I don't have anything else.
We want a drainage.
Motion to approve the drainage.
I'll second it.
Sub engineers report for DD number two.
Yes, yeah.
Questions or concerns?
I have a question, because it started about nine months before I became a supervisor. This is basically the thing that triggered it was to clean that ditch. And now we clean the ditch, we're gonna redo the laterals that are coming into it because there's too much silken and it's buried. Because I need to know considering it's a one point five million dollar project.
This would be just the first step in improving and accepting engineers.
You're right, we're just accepting the engineer's report, I just wanted.
There's gonna be hearings.
I just wanted a little.
Yeah, no, that's, well, it got started, there was Beaver Dam problems, there was some problems on the upper end, there was somebody who wanted some things changed, there's a whole bunch of things that kind of just triggered it, so.
I remember talking about the Beaver Dam.
Yeah, it's a big district, so.
And that's the second biggest one, it's over ten thousand acres, right?
Yeah.
We knew it was gonna be a.
I expected.
Right, that report will be online as soon as you guys accept it.
This is the one that came out with the estimates in the paper back in the spring of.
That would have been for some.
Nope, that was DD two.
Was that just for reclassification?
Yeah.
And then I thought I said it's on some fixing, some few things, but maybe not, doesn't matter.
It was mainly an annexation, yeah, so.
Then can we call? Oh, yeah, I used my phone and I called Jacob to see if we can set up, when we're gonna set up.
Let's accept it first. I'll take a motion to accept an engineer's report for DD number two.
A motion to accept the engineer's report.
I'll second it.
Move to second, for discussion, hearing none, all is fair to say, aye, 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 post same time, motion will care, so then we can set a hearing date.
Glad when we have a phone works.
One.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice.
Maybe shoot him an email and say, I, what, December?
Yeah.
It's gonna affect them, I mean, give them a chance.
Make sure they're available.
So they actually maybe shoot him a message for the first week or two in December and then we can set it next week.
Yep, sounds good.
Claims. Those questions, motion to approve claims.
I'll second it.
Second, for discussion. Hearing none, all is fair to say, aye, 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 post same time, motion will care, so then we can set a hearing date.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Reports.
Sorry.
I'll second it.
Second, for discussion. Wrong, do any for the sheriff's department, to the motion to approve the. They're all.
Change, I'll make a motion to approve the payroll change.
I'll say.
Second, for discussion.
Yeah, yeah, they're doing some.
Then, so I took a motion for the license.
I made a motion to prove the license.
I will second that.
Steve.
Thank you, Steve, Senator, CFO of D C, Ron Bailey, Ron Davis, to our directors. We stopped, I wanted to come to here today and ask about the TIF, the proposal. Right here last brand, we've been a while. Where that was at, what the decision was made and if we're moving forward, like a timeline and we're not, what's going on?
Well, we were. Told by our attorney that we should hold off until you guys are ready for a project to start. Just because of when we. Put that into the urban renewal, it starts a clock. And if it's two to three years, five years, maybe okay, but gets to ten years, you know, that money's starting to. Disappear basically, so if we get to that ten year point, then maybe you only have ten years left of TIF. So we wanna know that if you guys are ready for a project, ready to start, we can update and include that into our plan.
Right.
And then.
Closer to the project.
Closer to the project starting then, then further away. And we knew you were talking, I think, three to five years at the time, possibility, and I'd say things may have changed, but.
Well, and we were reading, put a second file in at Manly. That's, that's has to be decided, I guess the thought process was that we would get the TIF in place or we can delay it. If that's what you're thinking, then that, that helps us understand where we're at. Because up to this point, we haven't really had any correspondence on it and we were wondering what was going on. And we didn't have to make plans ourselves. If we're gonna do something at Manly, we need to know that we've got some support there. And otherwise, we have to consider other options.
Yeah, that wasn't it, it was just a clock start.
Yeah.
It wasn't beneficial, did you?
Yeah, it's, yeah, basically come, attorney recommendation from the attorneys that we hired to do all this stuff. Said when they come with a plan, then let's go from there because we don't want to start that clock too early and have something get delayed out. And then we lose, we lose funding opportunities.
Well, that's true, I mean, we, we've got a tip proposal right now, if they're currently giving it, basically been on two years delay, so that it. We're putting the proposal together, if the clock doesn't start ticking for two years.
Have you guys talked with City and Manly as well?
I hadn't talked to City, no.
Okay, because I mean, you know, that three hundred seventy street there, the road on the north end. Or the south end, your bunkers is, is the city limits, sure, so. You know, if there's some facilities going inside the city limits, that, that would, they would take precedence over us, but if it's something the project years you're gonna do, then it can capture on both sides. It'd be beneficial for both, both entities there to get in the same program, so.
Yep, sure, and if you have some kind of plan that we can eventually look at here, we can kind of accelerate that process too at that time, so.
Well, that helps, because like you said, we were just not aware of things, it's just like, okay, what are we doing here?
No, we can both support you, that's, you know, that's, that whole area is.
Yeah, if you had a plan ready right now, okay, you would have been on it.
Okay, very good, then we'll. Go back on this.
I'm trying to get secrets, you know, it does.
You know, you didn't see anything.
Yeah.
At all, and entertaining correspondence, we just wonder where our finger at.
We definitely would wanna see some development and, you know, and we'll work with you on that, so.
Fair enough.
Alright, thanks guys for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Thirty, so. We will do everything after that, so Melissa is not gonna be on the day, she's got much stuff going on. She's gonna be at the job fair for Larson's people, we'll wait her this Thursday, she said, plus a few other things going on, so. This is not on today. So we're gonna do thirteen fourteen, go.
Yeah, yeah. Guess one of the others.
Yeah. It's not on today, Department has, Sheriff.
Uh, only thing I have is I did lose a Jalen dispatcher to Floyd County, so I put out apps, I did get ahold of Melissa. To get something over their job fair too, so.
She said.
Yep, so.
We ought to honor the ninety people from this industry. Anybody else? Supervisor weekly.
I had, we all had the Windworth Vetco Executive Board meeting. And that Mrs. Johnson was there and gave us an update on Larson Manufacturers' closure and what they're doing there. Um. I think the thing that caught my eye was working on the covenants. Casino interchange. Those covenants changed. And then Vanguard is also working on an estimated ready fuels. And the city of Northwood has taken on home base Iowa package, so they're one of the. Matter of fact, Worth County, they're the first ones that are taking on the home base Iowa package. So, and then we have a tentative meeting set up for December twelfth for budget, depending on whether we need it or not. Otherwise, the next meeting is January ninth.
Or.
When we're back with executive. Yeah, those are both. Yep.
Is that a lot of theory?
That's what she said.
Yep. Uh, then I have partners for children, we're still looking for a coordinator. You have some place in accordance.
Yeah. Yeah, people try to take the spot all the time.
Just like IT for us, we're having a terrible time finding a coordinator for it. But we went through the financials and then the biggest change for us was de-cap carryover funds from the state. Went from two years to three years, so we can carry them over for three years, which will help out. I went to the EMS meeting in Northwood on Tuesday night. And that was quite informational. AJ did a fine job of explaining most everything. I think one of the things that came out in the meeting was they didn't feel there was enough information out there, there was a lack of information. So that was quite discussed. And then I had Windworth Vetco Advisory Board meeting, we went to the financials there. And then we also, within both counties, had a very extensive discussion on EMS, all hit surface there again and took quite a bit of time up. And then on May eleventh of twenty-three is an event at Diamond Joe Center. For thirty years of Windworth Vetco is coming up. So she's already reserved the event center out there. For May eleventh to twenty-three. Then I had North Iowa Children's Alliance, and of course, with all of these, we go through the financials, we did. Uh, approve a policy for extenuating circumstances. When it comes to preschool scholarships, because there's people out there that get cancer and. Get to, you know, things go haywire and they lose their paycheck for a while and we don't want their kids to. Not be able to go to preschool anymore, so we did pass that policy. And then we went through our community plan review that we had to get ready, so. That was Matt. That was my week.
Um, so I had EMS meetings, Monday was in Hamletown, Tuesday Northwood, Thursday in. Fertile, um, a lot of good comments, a lot of good questions, we're in the west side. Of how this is gonna work for them. Hamletown seemed to be very well receptive of it because they know it's a struggle over there for them, but. Fertile not have an EMS, um, so they get, you know, their fire department supports them and then. There's a lot of times they don't have enough people, they have no jobs in those towns, it's struggling, you know, so everybody that works around there, works in other communities, is available during the day, so. But, uh, yeah, Hamletown seemed very receptive of it. Just wanna know how it's gonna work, Fertile was kind of the same way. You know, they've got a pretty good service with Forest City being fifteen minutes away. Um, so they're, uh, they know we need the service, they know we need the help, but. They're just a little curious on, on how it's gonna work and how it's gonna affect their transport times if they don't get Forest City anymore, but. I've not been saying that they will or they won't, but, and then Northwood too. That was a tough meeting, but I think we got a lot of it out there. I know there's questions of, of the amount of information, but there's a lot of information that we don't have yet because. We've got requests for proposals out there, we don't know exactly what we're gonna get proposed with, for sure. And if, if the vote doesn't pass, we don't have the money, the conversations are over, you know, we, we, we need the money first to make anything go, but. So, that, that's the hardest part is, it's hard to narrow down anything with how the service is going on there. Speculation on, on what would work best for a county, but until we get proposals, we don't know the exact anything yet, so. And once, and once we do, if, if the, if the vote goes through and if we get, or when we get proposals, then we'll go back and do town hall meetings again, explaining what was proposed to us. And hopefully get information locked in a lot tighter of what, what could happen, so. So anyways, well, we have a meeting tonight for the analyst committee, so we'll discuss everything and then kind of wait for the election, so. And then I had Shawrock Watershed. Wednesday or Thursday, I don't remember. And we went and we interviewed our four proposals to write the comprehensive plan for that. Shawrock Watershed, and we did get a, a engineering firm picked that had done some other, a lot, a lot of other work in Iowa, that real good background. They're all good, good companies, but we just felt the one was a little more. Towards what we needed, so. So to get that done, so we can utilize our hundred thousand dollar grant from the DNR, get that done, so. Um, so I have last week.
I got one other thing I need to update you on, did you guys get an email about the, from the Iowa State Association of County Supervisors, wants a petition to intervene?
With the current pipeline?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Did it look like they changed their mind?
Well, they went ahead and they passed it and then they found out because of the expensive legal. Expenditures that we're gonna have to spend, they went back and re-sent it and now they're going to ask our legislatures to become involved in it and oversee it.
So I'll probably get a six hundred dollar check back.
No, that's a whole different. That's for the study for the compaction. So, yeah, we didn't have to pay anything for this, we just had to say whether we were for it or against it, we wanted them to. In other words, they'd be the, they'd, they'd be sitting there watching, getting over and reporting to us on what was going on.
Right.
But now they're gonna ask legislatures to do it because of the legal expense involved. So, I just wanted to let you know all that.
We set some meeting until nine thirty.
Yeah, I took it, but I didn't get your email.
A little easier for us to put it on right away. Otherwise, we have to get easements with landowners, then it's, it's a lot bigger expense.
So that's something that we should look at in the development plan, then, because if the county development plan says we want to target development. To occur along the state and federal highways, but the state says we don't wanna support that.
Right, they do support it, but if, they would rather, basically rather us, if we could find an alternative route, um, and it actually be. The, the distance is a lot identically the same to get there, whether you go, you know, either way, we gotta get up the interstate, we gotta go north or south to get. So, but, because there's some spots, you know, where there's service line connectivity in the right of way, but not actually necessarily. Pipeline in the right of way, so.
So is that their, their concern is really just. As far as using those, it's restricted to the use of the right of ways? Because I guess that's, that could be a difference of, if the state says we don't want to use the state highway right of way. For utilities, if you will. That could be different from saying. New commercial or industrial development alongside the state.
Yeah, 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 so that, that's a difference.
Different.
Yeah, that's two different things.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We should probably address that in a development plan too then, because right now it just has a blanket statement to. Yeah, do the, do the, the development along state federal highways.
And the, the actual development is, it hits Highway sixty-five, but the route, the pipeline's gonna take to get there, not be on state roads.
Right, right, okay.
It'll still get to the same place.
Yeah, 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 and it's still a benefit to the county.
Yeah.
Yes, definitely.
I wonder all the emails, I can send a female. Yes, maybe I shouldn't assume they were gonna be on there.
They would be there. I thought so. Little help, no, then don't hurt.
Well, and you can't vote today anyway because you're still missing one of the cities.
I tried to get ahold of them.
Which one are we missing?
Kansas.
Well, I talked to.
We talked to Cory.
Yeah, and, because he called and said he wanted supervisor to come down, I said, well, tell you since Mark's technically your supervisor.
But I was busy that night.
Right, we usually stick to covering our districts unless it's something else, but I said, Mark's been involved, they said he can get ahold of me when I send your number.
I asked, I didn't, I, I just told him I couldn't come, but I said, I actually, I was hoping he'd have his questions last Monday morning, and we could have discussed them.
Right.
Yeah, the questions, and then I sent him again here this week, and he hasn't responded, so I don't know.
See, we put her, I mean, they had it on their agenda, right at the beginning of September.
Right.
So I don't know.
They have another, maybe they already have a meeting.
Yeah, they had their meeting last Monday night, that's why I was trying to get their questions, and I couldn't go to the meeting, so I was busy that night. And, uh. Sent them about midweek, I said, did you come up with any questions, can you get them forward, just so we can get them answered, you know, as if they're legal question, I know, it's a simple question, that's funny, but it had to do with, I needed John or something, you know, that should be.
Right.
I don't know what their questions were, they haven't responded, so. For concerns, so. But we need to, what did you say, file for an extension or something, you're creating a tense, that's a, I don't know, that's not the correct term, but. We need to, because there's a timeframe, so we're gonna need a little more time, which we can. Do that somewhere.
Right, was it on there?
What was emails, word?
Was it, was it my agenda for them, this, this one?
Yeah, well, I never seen the agenda, he just asked if I could come, I told him, I, I sent him right back, said, no, I couldn't make it that night. Apologized, and, but I said, if you can get your questions to me by Monday morning, I can maybe get, you know, send emails to your board members and get their questions and concerns, and, yeah, so.
Okay.
So holiday, I don't know about.
No.
Nope, that was.
That was last one.
Last week. So, yeah, so the board can convene and close the hearing, and then table action on the resolution.
Maybe that's, maybe you just wanted us.
If we need additional time to consider.
So, since we're having the public hearing, that should be good, as long as.
Yes, because we can have the hearing, take the public comments, the resolution will be considered following the hearing. Contain, contains the finding, the board could convene and close the hearing, and then table the action on the resolution, if they need additional time to consider.
That's a lot to do, Ken hasn't signed yet, try to get it.
Give them.
Figure it out.
I mean, they should have put the questions together the night of the meeting, I would assume, they should really get into this, and we get the answers, and I realize they need another meeting, I suppose, but.
Right.
They could do a special, if we have the answers.
So, so in two weeks, have another one.
They have another meeting in two.
No, but it just says. Resolution being tabled to a board meeting two weeks later.
We can table for up to two weeks, so.
Oh, they post a timeline, I don't.
Yeah.
Do you want to wait for?
Neither, neither.
Maybe, maybe they weren't planning, I guess I should ask more questions, I'm sorry, guys.
No, no, I'm just.
I would guess if they said, here's, here's your course of action, that, they've said their piece, and that's just up to you guys.
Important, okay, Jackie, without the city consent, it's really important that we delay voting on the approval. We should have those in hand before the vote happens, or should modify the amendment to remove any property for which we cannot receive consent. Which would be the Kansas property.
Yeah, so the, close the public hearing, make a motion to table the resolution for.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Move the second, for the discussion, hearing none, all's in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all same time, motion will carry, I will reconvene the regular board meeting, and take consideration for the resolution to approve urban real. Or table.
A motion to table that, um, for two weeks, until we can get, uh, needed paperwork from, so you can.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. Discussion, uh, real call over.
Hi.
Stone.
Hi.
So maybe I, the motion will carry. We'll be taking, not taking a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Then move to the second, I was prepared to say aye.
Aye.
All same time, motion will carry.
Make it. Who's sending you these emails?
Uh, it was Jackie and John and me, we're, I don't know why they include, include all of you, but they, they didn't, so.